All right. Good evening, Dillworth Glen and Felton School District. Due to the current federal and state emergency declarations, the Minnesota Directive to residents to stay at home and guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting of the Dillworth Glen and Felton School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statutes 13D.021, meetings by telephone or other electronic means. Due to the health pandemic, the school board determined that it is not feasible for at least one board member, the superintendent, or the school district's legal counsel to be physically present at the regular meeting location, and that it is not feasible for the public to attend this meeting at the regular meeting location due to the current health pandemic. School board members are reminded to mute their microphone or phone when they are not speaking. School board members wishing to speak should use the, um, raise your hand, little guy up in the left-hand corner, please, and I will acknowledge you. Um, when recognized, the board member should unmute their microphone or phone and speak and then mute their microphone again. All votes will be conducted by roll call. Each school board member should wait until their name is called before voting. This meeting is being recorded, so access to this recording will be made available on the school district's website as soon as reasonably possible. So, thank you. Um, tonight we have with us, we have, um, board members Raleigh Grul, Laura Item, Amy Johnson, Ronnie Tang, and David Eilertson. Sandy Hawk is not available to be here tonight. Um, others present, we have principals Margot Hillah, Joe Keefe, uh, community or, uh, special ed director, Mary Ann Martin, our technology director, John Jacobson, and our superintendent. Uh, Brian Tegason is unavailable this evening as well. So, um, everybody, welcome. Uh, so we have some changes to the agenda. We are gonna be adding, oh, heaven's sakes, I just had that paper all, so sorry. Um, we are gonna be adding 10.1 will be resolution regarding fund balance transfer. And 10.2, we're gonna be adding a certified contract for a speech and language teacher. So, um, the board comments, future agenda items will be moved down to 11, and it will be 11.1, 2, and 3. Amy, do you have that?
Yep, I got it.
Okay, so with that being said, anybody else have any changes to the agenda? No? Okay, oh, Raleigh raised his hand. Go ahead, Raleigh.
I think Wayne did join us also.
Oh, okay. Yep, all right, and principal Wayne Lepard is joining us as well. So, thank you, Raleigh. Okay, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
So moved by Amy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. All right, we'll do a roll call vote here. David?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Aye, myself aye. Uh, motion carries 6-0. Um, anybody have any, uh, rebel recognition? There was no public comments on our spreadsheet today, so anybody have any rebels they wanna recognize? All right, we're, we're in summer mode. All right, let's move on to reports. Uh, 6.1, we have, uh, Dillworth Elementary report. Uh, that's gonna be principal Joe Keefe. Go ahead, Joe.
And Lindsay, if it's okay with the board, Margot and I were gonna do 6-1 and 6-2 together since they're kind of, so.
Yep, absolutely. Go ahead, you two.
All right.
All right, well, I shared, um, I, I just shared our outline, so you guys will have it as well. So, um, if you needed, it's shared with you in your email. So, um, little up, a few updates, um, Rebel Success, we, uh, Joe and I did some, um, some surveying and seeing what teachers were, um, available and with the uncertainty of summer, we, you know, we were really thinking about how we can expand for, you know, years to come because, you know, if we can have the programming and the clients, you know, Minnesota will pay us. So, we were thinking about that, and then we decided that, you know, with the uncertainty of everything, and with the possibility of distance learning and how that's gonna look and, and all of the, you know, upheaval of the summer, we're gonna just stick to, um, our regular plan for Rebel Success, dates being August 3rd through 6th and August 10th through 13th, and this is for both of the elementaries. Once we get closer to that time, um, we'll look at how many kiddos we have signed up and, and how we're going to do that with our distance learning, and then see who we need for teachers. Joe and I also before our, um, teachers left for the year, got their feedback, um, regarding some of the program changes and who wants to, um, teach. Um, and then the distance learning survey, um, I think we talked about this last school, uh, board report. Um, Joe and I did a distance learning staff survey for all of our elementary staff, and got 41 responses, which was awesome, very, very valuable stuff. Um, what I did is, I sent you all a collaborator, I made you all collaborators, so you can go in and see the responses. Um, you can just click response on the top of that Google Doc, or if you want, um, help turning that into a spreadsheet, so we can, you know, kinda organize it a little bit more, I would definitely be willing to, um, help you out with that. But I think it's really awesome feedback from all of the staff, um, and it's gonna be great to utilize that, whatever options we're gonna be taking going into our fall.
All right, we were unable to do our, our typical kindergarten roundup where we bring in our future kindergartners, they come in for a night and things like that. So, we're gonna, with Margot, we, we talked to our site teams, birth to five. The recommendation that we will be, or that we're, we're giving the board would be, since with the uncertainty, we're, we weren't able to keep planning out, planning out, we didn't know when for sure we'd be able to bring people in. So, the kindergarten teachers were all on board, and instead of doing a two-day orientation, we would move that to a three-day orientation, and what that will do is we'll give every student and teacher, um, more time together, so they can meet each other, go over the ground rules, uh, see the class, see the school.
Sorry.
And, uh, and so we did have to look to make sure that that extra day, we, we are still fine. Um, as per the Department of Ed, we need 850 hours, even going to the 164 days then, which is what those three days, after those three days are taken out, we're still over by about 175 hours. So, we are still well within the guidelines, I mean substantially. Um, so we would be doing that, we wouldn't need to change the calendar other than that Thursday and Friday, which were dictated for the kindergarten orientation. We'd also use that following Monday. So, we'd go that Thursday, Friday, that following Monday, that would give them the three days. We'd have our, uh, assistants will open up synergy and allow, uh, parents to sign up for a time slot, things like that. So, we feel that would be the best, uh, you know, kinda the best of both worlds, given the circumstances, that they'd get more time with their teacher and, uh, more time to kinda get the feel for it, being new, you know, kindergartners, so. That's what we have for that. Elementary handbooks, uh, revising them, nothing major on that, that you guys will, will have your, your readings for. Um, summer technology requests for learners, those are principal approved by site, so we're getting those for the, um, anything in the summer, if they want something, they have to run it through the office, and of course, we're, we're hand-in-hand with Jake on, on the technology piece. And elementary state, uh, reports, we have those completed for both sites. So, we are off and running, and I'll turn it back over to Margot.
All right, so a little update on our title programming work. Um, I was working on some of the numbers and just looking at some of the, um, the student counts, and we have our title grant open now on MDE, so that work has begun, um, for our Title I and our Title II grants. Again, our, our Title I budget for next year is something around 129, and I haven't seen the numbers for Title II, but it's usually, it usually hovers around that 26,000 to 28,000. Um, and maybe Eric has seen those for Title II, him and I were, talked about that, getting that, um, off and running today again.
And we're meeting, uh, so coming up, obviously, the three different scenarios that MDE is coming out. They will make their decision at the end of July, which I'm sure you've all, um, heard, whether we're in-school, hybrid, or distance learning, you will all very much be a part of that, depending on how we roll, so that's gonna be nothing new. Elementary job postings, right now, we don't have any. Um, and to piggyback off of that, Margot and I did, uh, the interviews for the physical education position, and we had some amazing candidates, and it was a really tough decision, but we're both, uh, pretty excited with the one that we got, which I believe you will hopefully approve for us tonight, so.
Um, and then lastly, we, um, are gonna have informational meeting with some elementary staff tomorrow. Um, it was very voluntary for third and fourth grade, um, and fifth grade as well, um, regarding the possibility of moving Avid into elementary or elementary part joining. Um, again, this will be, this will be just informational tomorrow, um, and they'll, Shannon from Avid will show us, you know, we know the success it's had at the middle school and the high school, so, um, we think it's time to start moving it down to the elementary. But once, once we have, um, the, the representation and then the information to the third, fourth, and our fifth grade, we, what we'll do is we'll take that information, and then we'll be bringing it to site leadership and birth to five, um, as we learn more to, um, kinda decipher and, and kinda see how we're gonna handle that going forward. Do you have any questions for us?
I have a quick question for the kindergarten roundup. You said that it's gonna be the Thursday, Friday, and Monday. Just so I'm clear, what are the dates that we're talking about?
That would be the 27th, 28th, and 31st.
Okay, so they're, they're, so they're starting the same day as everybody else? Isn't the first day of school, the 27th, for everybody?
Yeah, but they wouldn't, that would be the first round of the orientation, so I think every teacher would probably get roughly six kids would show up on that day, then a different six would show up on the 28th.
Okay.
Given, I mean, I'm ju, I'm roughly around that 18 to 20 kids per class. And then they would all be together, starting September 1st, would be their first full day as classmates.
And it's more optimal too to have them have that, a shorter first week to begin with for those, for those little tikes, um, that, you know, we had talked with our kindergarten teachers about that, so that helps with that factor as well.
Okay, and you said there wasn't any openings for elementary, so does that mean there has been a hire for Mrs. Munis's replacement?
Uh, Mrs. Dunham is moving to Mrs. Munis's spot.
I'm sorry?
Nicole Dunham, fifth grade teacher. Yep, she'll be moving back to kindergarten.
Okay.
Lindsay, you're on mute.
Oh, thank you. My dogs are working, sorry. Any more questions for principals Joe and Margot? All right, thank you two. We appreciate you. Um, 6.3, board committee reports. Anybody have any? I attended a oversight committee, gosh, was it two weeks ago? Um, and I think the biggest thing that, um, I took away from it is how well everything is really coming together. Um, I really enjoyed, they showed, uh, pictures of how they can shut the school down into basically pods, not pods, I shouldn't say that, section off the school. So, when events or incidents are happening, they can lock down doors, and it just so much, um, goes with our, our goal of safety and security. It was just really neat to see, and, uh, I, I was really impressed by that. But, um, since Brian isn't here, I will share, uh, right now, it's just a little frustrating at the state level. Um, you know, bureaucracy trying to get our permits approved. Um, Brian has done some, uh, legwork by calling, uh, the commissioner and our representatives to try to get things moving, and we did get the go-ahead that we can start, uh, with, with moving dirt. Um, I have not been by the school this week, can anybody speak if they've started moving anything? Anybody?
Yep.
Okay, they, they have started doing some stuff?
So, yeah, we have, uh, the construction crews on site, we had the electricians are here, uh, the demo teams got their trailer, Comstock was on site, so today, basically kinda running around, they're setting up a couple different command centers or headquarters where they can all meet, and then we're making sure, I, I, I talked with maintenance today, making sure we have enough master keys, just so we don't have to be following them around, let them kinda do their thing, and, um, they've got the schedule of the doors getting locked down, so they've got a means to get in and get out, and the building will be secured behind them when they leave. So, we don't really have a lot of time restrictions on them. If they wanted to go a little bit later, they can do so. Um, just knowing that the buildings will be locked, so, when they leave, so.
Awesome, thank you. Oh, this is so exciting, so excited.
And we have an oversight committee meeting this Thursday again at 9 to 11, is that correct?
Yes. Yep, yep. Ronnie, you were on that call, or Raleigh, did you guys have anything to add, Ronnie?
I don't think so, you know, we just touched two again for the rest of you on having that extra dirt to dig out on the west side, there were that sinkhole could be, or whatever, so, you know, we gotta spend what we gotta spend to get the dirt down to where it needs to be.
Raleigh, did you have anything to add?
No, that was pretty much it, and it's hard to say how big an area that is. It, it kinda, they kinda made it sound like it was a, a black dirt fill. So, I know that there's, uh, some kind of a sewer line there, you can drive by the back and see manholes, so it could just be part of that, that's all.
Okay. Uh, David or Laura, did you guys have any meetings? No, no meetings. All right, let's move on to 6.4, uh, superintendent report. I'm just gonna highlight for the public that could listen to this later. Um, pretty much all, uh, Superintendent Tegason was gonna talk about tonight was the Clay County contracts for the SRO and nursing services. Um, these are something that we do every two years, and, um, is a good thing for our, our community. We were working collaboration with Clay County Sheriff's Department and the, um, uh, the Clay County, uh, nurse, nursing. So, you guys were able to read that, board members. Um, we have a bunch of new certified contracts for new hires that we'll be going through down in the agenda. Um, we are doing our annual, um, kinda things on our finances as far as like deposit, depository, impress fund, petty cash, and investments. And then, I'm sorry, I didn't mention earlier, our business manager, Eric Exner, is gonna be on, um, and he's gonna go over our, uh, fiscal year 21 budget, so he's gonna go over that for, um, everyone this evening. So, that was pretty, pretty much kind of it, so these are just kinda straightforward meetings tonight, so. Anyway, let's move on to 7.1, approval of the Ju, June 8th, regular meeting minutes. Um, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Uh, that motion by David, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Raleigh. All right, we'll do a roll call vote here. David?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
And myself aye, motion carries 6-0. Um, on to 8.0, we have the consent agenda. Uh, Raleigh, what are claims and accounts?
Uh, tonight, we have the amount of $311,565.43.
All right, thank you. Also included in your packet is the treasure report and fund total report, Minnesota liquid asset and max account and activity account reports. Um, do we have a motion to approve? So, oh my goodness, three of you. I think I got Laura first. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ronnie, any discussion, any questions? Hearing no questions or discussion, let's do a roll call vote here. David?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
And myself aye, motion carries 6-0. We're gonna move on to, um, 9.1 here. This is the resolution establishing dates for filing affidavits for candidacy for the 2020 school district general election. Um, let's go ahead and have Amy read the resolution, or should I get a motion first?
Uh, let's do a motion.
Okay, can we, uh, who, uh, can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Uh, motion by David, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura, and Amy, the floor is yours to read the resolution, please.
Okay. Pursuant to due call and notice thereof, a regular meeting of the School Board of Independent School District number 2164, Dillworth Glen and Felton, State of Minnesota, was held in said school district on June 22nd, 2020, at 6 o'clock PM for the purpose and part of establishing dates for filing affidavits of candidacy for the 2020 school district general election. All members have, or following members who are present, David Eilertson, Laura Item, Lindsay Leach, Amy Johnson, Raleigh Grul, and Ronnie Tang. The following member was absent, Sandy Hawk. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District number 2164, member David introduced the following resolution and moves it to adoption. The period for filing affidavits for candidacy for the school board member of Independent School District number 2164 shall begin on Tuesday, July 28th, 2020, and close on Tuesday, August 11th, 2020. An affidavit of candidacy must be filed in the office of the school district clerk in the district office in Dillworth, and the $2 filing fee paid prior to 5 o'clock PM on August 11th, 2020. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said filing dates to be published in the form, the official newspaper of the district, at least two weeks prior to the first day to file affidavits of candidacy. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said filing dates to be posted at the administrative offices of school district at least 10 days prior to the first day of file, to file affidavits for candidacy. The notice of said filing dates shall be in substantially the following form. Um, notice is hereby given that the period for filing affidavits of candidacy for the school board of, the office of School Board of Independent School District number 2164 shall begin on Tuesday, July 28th, 2020, and close at 5 o'clock on Tuesday, August 11th, 2020. The general election shall be held Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020. At that election, four members will be elected to the school board for four, for terms of four years each. Adadavits of candidacy are available from the school district office at 113 First Avenue Northwest, Dillworth, Minnesota 56529. The filing fee for this office is $2. A candidate for this office must be eligible voter, must be 21 years of age or more on assuming office, and must be a resident of the school district from which the candidate seeks election for 30 days prior to the general election, and must have no other affidavit on file for any other office at the same general election. Adadavits of candidacy must be filed in the office of the school district clerk in the office, district office of Dillworth, and the filing fee paid prior to 5 o'clock PM on Tuesday, August 11th, 2020. The motion for adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly seconded by Laura. On roll call vote, the following voted.
All right, let's do a roll call here. Um, David?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
And myself aye, resolution carries 6-0.
Lindsay, can you scroll up the agenda on your thing?
Absolutely, just give me one second, like right there?
It's not moving on ours, but.
Maybe if I click back over, let's try that, did it move?
Didn't see anything, but that's fine, if you don't get it, just go ahead.
Okay, all right. Um, I'll try again here. 9.2, we've got our depository. Um, this is to approve the designation of Northwestern Bank of Dillworth. Um, MSDLF and MSDMAX as office depositories for the 2020-2021 school year. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
All right, motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Raleigh, any, uh, questions or discussion? All right, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote. Um, go ahead, uh, David?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
And myself aye, motion carries. All right, 9.3, this is our impress fund. This is, uh, set, uh, this is a set, the district-wide impress fund at a replenishable maximum of 6,000 effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021, and authorizes Eric Exner, Brooke Belka, and Brian Tegason to sign and issue checks. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ronnie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Raleigh, all right, roll call vote. David?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Raleigh? You there, Raleigh?
Aye.
And Ronnie?
Aye.
And myself aye, motion carries. All right, 9.4, this is, uh, petty cash. Um, this is a motion for the petty cash at a replenishable maximum of $100 effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021, and authorize Eric Exner, um, Tiara Christian, and Brooke Belka at the Dillworth site to distribute, disperse funds from the account upon receipt of appropriate documentation of expenditures by employees of the district. Um, Tiara Christian, the Dillworth site will be named caretaker of the petty cash fund. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Uh, motion by David, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura, any discussion or questions? Hearing no discussion or questions, uh, let's do a roll call. David?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
And myself aye, motion carries 6-0. 9.5, this is a motion for, um, to authorize the treasurer or Brian Tegason, um, to invest the school district cash pursuant to the board policy effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. Do we have a motion?
We're moved.
Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David, uh, any, uh, questions or discussion? Hearing no questions or discussion, we'll do a roll call vote here. Ronnie?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Myself aye, motion carries 6-0. 9.6, this is, uh, for our preliminary budget of the fiscal year 21 as presented. Let's go ahead and get a motion.
So moved.
Okay, I got Ronnie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Raleigh. All right, I'm gonna, uh, ask, uh, Eric to hop on here and explain the budget to us.
Okay. All right, as promised, I will keep this to under 10 minutes. Um, but overall, uh, the budget grew by about 10% this year, and the majority of that is we picked up, uh, a little bit of extra debt this year with the bond referendum. So, that comes for the lion's share of the increase in our overall budget. Uh, but we did increases based on the certified contract for both pay and benefits, uh, looked at, you know, budgeting increases for such things as insurance, utilities, um, and reducing other expenses or capital expenditures are gonna have to go down some because we've promised a good share of our LTFM to, uh, debt services for the upcoming year, but all in all, it's a conservative budget considering the uncertainty of the upcoming school year. And the one major thing is that we're based on a flat enrollment at this time. Um, depending on what happens this fall, uh, we could be looking at, uh, significant budget adjustments in the future. But right now, it's a pretty conservative based on where we think the district will end up for the upcoming year. Uh, that being said, I'd open up to any questions that the board members may have.
Anybody have any questions? All right, no one has any questions, Eric.
All right.
Thank you, thank you though, um, for the work that you're doing on that. Um, uh, Brian was speaking very highly of the work that you've done, so we appreciate you, and thank you. So, we've got a motion by Ronnie and a second by Raleigh. Um, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote here. We've got David?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Uh, Laura?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
And myself aye, motion carries. Okay, we're on to 9.7. Um, this is for our extra board bills, uh, check run. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Uh, right, and this is for the extra check run on June 30th for the F, uh, the fiscal year 20 bills. Any discussion or questions? All right, hearing no discussion or questions, we'll do a roll call. David?
Aye.
Uh, Ronnie?
Aye.
Amy.
Hi.
Laura.
Hi.
Raleigh.
Hi.
And myself, I, motion carries six zero. Uh, nine point eight, this is the two thousand and twenty 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 five school resource officer contract. Um, everybody get received that in their contract, um, it did increase a little bit based on um percent wage increases, uh, anybody, uh. Well, let's get a motion and then we'll have discussion or questions, is there a motion? So move. Uh, motion by Laura, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Raleigh, any discussion or questions?
Think if I read it right, Lindsay, that is a five year one though, right, locked in?
Correct. Yes, that is what I read as well, but let me confirm that just for everybody watching, it's a five year contract. Um, the new contract shows a five point five, four point five seven increase, but is frozen at that rate for five years. So that is the, yep, you're welcome. All right, um, any other discussion or questions? All right, let's do a roll call vote, Ronnie.
Hi.
Raleigh.
Hi.
David.
Hi.
Laura.
Hi.
Amy.
Hi.
And myself, I, motion carries six zero. Uh, nine point nine, this is the two thousand and twenty 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 two school nursing agreement with Clay County Public Health. Uh, do we have a motion? So move. Uh, motion by Laura, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy, any discussion or questions on this one?
Lindsay, do you know with the nursing agreement, is it always in a two year um timeframe or?
I believe, yes, it always has been in the past, um.
And the S R O is always a five year contract?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, I do believe, um, just for the public that would be viewing this, um, the the nursing is through the Clay County Public Health. Um, the it increases uh four point six five percent over the course of the two years. Uh, where uh which is required by statute based on our enrollment numbers to have a licensed county nurse under contract. So we have two, we have Kayla Walton, who is in the Dilworth site, and then we have Beth Renner over in Glendon. So, any other questions or discussions on that? All right, let's go into roll call, Ronnie.
Hi.
Raleigh. Roll, you're there.
Sorry about that, hi.
David.
Hi.
Laura.
Hi.
And my uh Amy.
Hi.
And myself, I, look alive, we're all look alive, we're not done yet.
Uh, we just had a, we just had a page for an accident, I was just looking at.
Oh, no, you're okay, do you need to, do you need to leave?
Nope.
Okay. All right, nine point ten, retirement incentive, um. This is the reentirement incentive for Jeannie Highness, uh, do we have a motion?
So move.
Uh, motion by Ronnie and uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Amy, uh, any discussion? I was trying, let me look, I just want to, I know it says as presented and Brian wasn't here to present it, so just for the public, um, this is the same thing we had offered, um. Cindy, uh, he reviewed it. Uh, he attacked, sent the attachment to the board members. Um, it represents three years of health benefits at the yearly rate provided in the contract, so um, just to provide clarification, that's what this for, so uh, let's go into a roll call vote, Ronnie.
Hi.
Amy.
Hi.
Laura.
Hi.
Hi.
Raleigh.
Hi.
And myself, I, motion carries six zero. Uh, nine point eleven, certified contract, this is for Abby Skeb- Skelbar high school fax teacher, she's a B A step one, this will start the effect of the two thousand and twenty 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 one school year, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Uh, motion by David, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Raleigh, Wayne, is this um gonna be a full time position?
Yeah, it'll be a full time position. It it'll take up the slack of the of the uh industrial tech position.
Okay, thank you, all right, let's go ahead and we'll do a roll call, David.
Hi.
Laura.
Hi.
Amy.
Hi.
Raleigh.
Hi.
Ronnie.
Hi.
And myself, I, this uh six zero motion passes. Um, nine point one two, certified contract for Jodeen, Jodeen Fitzgerald Roberts, this will be a high school Spanish teacher. Um, Wayne, can you fill out, uh, I got a blank here? What, she's the step seven, but is it a B A, M A?
It'd be a B A plus thirty. She's got.
Thirty.
Plus thirty, so she has two uh B A degrees, one in German and one in Spanish.
Wow, cool, maybe we should start offering German. Wayne shaking his head there. Ronnie's all about it up on the corner here, yes.
Remember from twenty thirty fifty years ago, so.
Oh, that's wonderful, well, great, so, okay, so I'm just gonna say it again, she's a B A plus thirty, step seven, um, do we have a motion? So moved, motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, I think it was Raleigh. All right, let's uh, any other questions for uh Wayne regarding this position? Okay, uh, let's do a roll call, Ronnie.
Hi.
Raleigh.
Hi.
David.
Hi.
Laura.
Hi.
Amy.
Hi.
Motion carries, just gonna move my thing up here for everybody to see. Okay, um, nine point thirteen, certified contract for Damian Crawford, uh, physical education teacher B A step one, um, do we have a motion? So moved. Uh, I got a motion from Laura, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, second by David, I think got that one first, um. Any questions, where is this, where is this uh fire teacher gonna be located, Joe?
Uh, Glendon Felton Elementary.
Okay, so this is for Glendon Felon Elementary, let's do a roll call, Ronnie.
Hi.
Raleigh.
Hi.
David.
Hi.
Laura.
Hi.
Amy.
Hi.
And myself, I, motion carries six zero. Um, nine point one four, this is a revised fiscal year eighteen fiscal year twenty superintendent contract. Um, do we have a motion? So moved. Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura, any discussion or questions?
Uh, Lindsay, this is David, uh, I know we had it reviewed by Kevin Rob School District Board meeting. And were there any changes made?
Um, very, no.
Few, I'd take it.
Yep, yep, no, very few, um, sorry, I'm trying to go through on my phone, no, he had sent it. Just bear with me one second here, um. No, I do not believe there was anything significant, I'm pulling it up, David, here.
Yep.
Um. Just basically, he added in the under um article four section one, the parties agree that that this contract, which is approved and signed by the parties on June twenty second, two thousand and twenty is a modification to the seventeen twenty seventeen through twenty twenty contract, which was in effect prior to this modified contract. This modified contract places and supersedes the prior contract between the parties, and that's all he added.
Okay, oh, very good.
I'm just cruising through the end here. Nope, that was it, all right, any other questions or discussion? All right, uh, let's do a roll call, Ronnie.
Hi.
Raleigh.
Hi.
David.
Hi.
Laura.
Hi.
Amy.
Hi.
And myself, I, motion carries. Nine point one five, revised twenty fiscal year twenty one superintendent contract, is there a motion?
So moved.
Uh, motion by Raleigh, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ronnie, any questions or discussion? Um, and I think that was the same. Uh, there was one thing, David, um, uh, article six section one. Uh, he just added, the parties agree that the superintendent is salaried and exempt employee for state and federal wage and hourly purposes, as such, the superintendent may well have to work beyond the number of days specified above, if that occurs, he will not receive additional compensation for that. Um.
I did see that, so I was, I couldn't remember if that was in the original, but yeah, no, that's good.
And then, um under, I'm not very good with all these Roman numerals, uh, article ten section five, uh severance pay, the superintendent's severance benefits shall be stated in article ten, section five of the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and twenty contract between the superintendent and the school district is mutually modified by the parties and writing on June twenty second of two thousand and twenty. And that was the only other thing.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you, David, um, uh, let's do a roll call here, uh, David.
Hi.
Uh, Ronnie.
Hi.
Amy.
Hi.
Laura.
Hi.
Raleigh.
Hi.
And myself, I, motion carries six zero. Um, now we're gonna move on to our extra addition items, we have ten point oh, this is a resolution regarding fund balance transfer, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Uh, motion by David, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura, and Amy, do you have that resolution to read?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
The following resolution was moved by David Eilertson and seconded by Laura Item, resolution regarding fund balance transfers. Whereas Minnesota Governor Tim Walz issued emergency executive order twenty nineteen on March twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty, which stated in part, paragraph twenty one, upon approval of by the executive council, school districts and schools are authorized to transfer operating funds from certain programs that are not already assigned to or encumbered by staff salary and benefits or otherwise encumbered by federal law for the following purposes. A, to provide care for eligible children during the school day, and B, to pay additional transportation costs incurred between March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty and April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty needed to implement this executive order in providing distance learning instruction. Whereas a fund transfer is allowed if the transfer meets the criteria set forth in paragraph twenty one C of emergency executive order twenty dash nineteen. The transfer does not increase state aid obligations to the district or result in additional property tax authority for the district or charter school. A transfer is limited to the operating funds of a district or charter school. A school board must approve a fund transfer by the fiscal year reporting deadline. A district or charter school must maintain accounting records for the purpose of this executive order that are sufficient to document both the specific funds transferred and use of those funds. Such accounting records are subject to auditor review. Any execution of this flexibility must not interfere with or jeopardize funding per federal requirements. Any transfer must not interfere with equitable delivery of distance learning or social distance models. Whereas the school board of district or school board of Dilworth, Glendon, Felton Public Schools Independent School District twenty one sixty four has determined that the criteria identified under paragraph twenty one C have been satisfied for a fund transfer pursuant to emergency executive order twenty nineteen. Whereas the school board of independent school district twenty one sixty four has reviewed and approved the attached request for fund transfer. There therefore be it resolved that the school board of independent school district twenty one sixty four authorizes the school district administration to submit the attached request for fund transfer. Can we get a roll call?
All right, um, Ronnie. Oh, you're still on mute, you're still on mute, Ronnie.
Let's try that, is that better?
Yep, yep, there you go, go ahead.
Uh, question for Eric, I'm assuming that we've got more than enough expenses to cover what we're transferring then? Uh, yes, that's about what we have, uh, I already talked to the auditors and uh this can be carried over to F Y twenty twenty one, so if we wouldn't use it all up this year, we and we know we're gonna need additional uh P P E in the new year. Those funds will carry over to cover those additional expenses in the new year. Okay, good, thank you.
Yep. Great, uh, go ahead, Ronnie, roll call.
Hi.
Raleigh.
Hi.
Uh, David.
Hi.
Laura.
Hi.
Amy.
Hi.
And myself, I, motion carries, okay, um, ten point two. This is a certified contract for Sarah, I'm gonna say it wrong here, I gotta look here, Sarah, all her?
Sarah Euler.
Speech language pathologist, um, go ahead, Mary Ann, can you give us a little update here?
Yep, we had one more speech path um person to hire because Betty Benson um had retired and then she agreed to come back because otherwise I would have had to fill her position and one other position. And so with Betty coming back part time and now Sarah Euler joining pending school board approval, um, then we will be set for the school year as far as our speech language pathologists. And at this time, it looks like we'll have Heidi Hunter and Sarah Euler at the Dilworth site for this year, and then Betty and Wanda will both be at the Glendon site, and they're both um part time. Um, but they should be able to cover all of those needs at the, excuse me, at the Glendon site for next year, and then as of right now, um, besides pair positions to hire for I only have one more special education teaching position um, open at that, open at this time, and that's for the Dilworth site.
Thank you, Mary Ann, no, you've been working hard, it's filled, so thank you. Do we have a motion to approve this contract of Sarah's?
So moved.
Uh, motion by Laura, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote, if there's, are, is there any more questions for Mary Ann? Okay, Ronnie.
Hi.
Raleigh.
Hi.
David.
Hi.
Laura.
Hi.
And my uh, Amy.
Hi.
Myself, I, motion carries six zero, okay. Moving on to eleven point uh one. Uh, we have a school board work session next Monday night, June twenty ninth at six P M. This will be an hour, um, with a hard stop, it's just going to be review of the current bond project uh, for those board members that aren't on the um district oversight committee, just to see kind of what's been happening and what's going on, so that's happening next Monday night, so let me know if you're not gonna be able to attend. And then, uh, let's see, ten point or eleven point two is fiscal personnel committee, so we'll have that Monday, July thirteenth at five P M. And that will be virtual as well, and then eleven point three, our next school board meeting is Monday, July thirteenth at six P M., it's crazy to think after the fourth of July. How is that possible?
Oh.
Uh, going to, all right, all, thank you for joining in tonight, and uh, everybody have a nice evening.